Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Township of Hillsboro Planning Board Public Meeting for Thursday, October 6th at the Municipal Courtroom. Would you all please join me in a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, just as a law.
This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, also known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2022 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the Township Clerk, posted on the township website, and available at the Hillsboro Township Municipal Complex. Application documentations have been made available on the township's website at https/ hillsboronj.civicclerk.com. And complete applications, applications files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for Inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. May I have a roll call, please, of the members and also the board professionals?
Chair Siracha, Mr. Wagner, Ms. Smith, our ass, Mr. Peasen.
Here.
Mr. Senator Armita.
Here.
Mr. Scoboe.
Here.
Mr. Hashtag.
Here.
Mr. Chicorelli.
Here.
Committeeman Delcor.
Here.
Herr Leponti.
Present.
Mr. Julien.
Here.
Mr. Maskey.
Here.
Mr. Coys.
Present.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Mr. Hay.
Here.
Cass.
Here.
I'm here.
Okay. Next up on the agenda would be the consideration of meeting minutes from September 8th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, the individuals eligible are Mr. Scoboe, Mr. Hashtag, Mr. Chicorelli, on a limited basis, I believe, you'll explain, Committeeman Delcor, the mayor, and yourself.
A motion to approve the minute meetings of... I'll make that motion.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a roll call?
Can't make the second, Rob, you weren't here.
Mr. Scoboe.
Mr. Scoboe made the motion, who made the second?
Peace is second.
Peace and King wasn't present.
Oh, he wasn't present.
Second. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Yes, with the exception to abstention from the application portion of the minutes.
Committeeman Delcor?
Yes.
Herr Leponti?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julien?
Yes.
Okay, next up would be, we're going to take a look at the application for the public hearing, but Mr. did not have the attorney representative.
I understand the applicant's counsel is here. Mr. Chairman, we would ask for a motion to suspend the order of business to allow that the application, piece of the application be brought before the board at this time.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Council, make yourself comfortable and indicate who you are for the record.
Good evening, members of the board. Caitlin Mitchko from the Law for Estavo Shawk on behalf of the applicant.
My friend closer.
Oh.
Yeah, here. Push it closer to you.
Is this better?
Yep.
Gotcha. Caitlin Mitchko from the Law for Estavo Shawk on behalf of the applicant Homestead Road LLC. Did you misspell my name?
Please.
Okay.
Thank you.
The applicant hereby requests an adjournment of the Homestead Road LLC subdivision and site plan application in light of the board's own suggestion that the property must be re-surveyed to address any changes in the existing site conditions due to the farmer's plowing of the fields. Per Mr. O'Grady's various discussion with the board professionals, in response to Attorney Bernstein's letter dated September 23rd, Van Cleve Engineering is going to resurvey these existing site, specifically noting any changes to the grading, wetlands, slopes, and tree removal in order to update the existing features sheet of the site plan. The applicant is requesting the December 8th hearing date, and the applicant has filed a consent to extension of time throughout the year's end, the copy of which I have with me for the board. Thank you.
For the purposes of the record, Mr. Chairman, just for the itself, this is Homestead Road LLC, file number 21TV25MSMSPV, block 200.10, lots 32 and 33, 200 Homestead Road and 89 Homestead Road. Applicant is seeking preliminary and final major subdivision approval, determine minor subdivision preliminary and final major site plan approval. See both variances and waivers to consolidate the two lots and then subdivide into two reconfigured lots. Demolish all existing structures to construct two warehouse office buildings with associated stormwater, parking, and site improvements on property in the T E C D, Transitional Economic Development District. As we call, this is a continuation from the July 7th meeting. I will indicate, members of the board, for the record, there were multiple letters from me to Mr. O'Grady that you all have relative to not just the issue of the reconfiguration of the topography, but other environmental issues that I would assume will either be addressed or will have to be addressed at the next meeting, assuming the board is of indication to grant this extinction. We could be an extension to continue this meeting to December 8th, 2022 at 7:30 PM, or soon thereafter if the matter may be heard without further notice, assuming that is the board's pleasure. And the TOD, I believe, council is through December 31st?
Yes.
So what was the, I'm sorry, what was the date that we're looking for, then?
December 8th.
December 8th.
The farewell meeting of the year.
Does anybody on the board have anything they need to add or say?
Just wanted to make sure, so one, if they're going to do the survey, then that will be submitted back in sufficient time for us to be able to review those materials and post it publicly prior to the December 8th meeting.
That is the plan, yes.
That includes the objectors as well. I don't know, are there any objectors here this evening? Come on up.
No.
State your name for the record, sir.
Brian Tarantino, 235 Fairfield Lane.
Any issues with the continuing extinction, Mr. Tarantino?
No.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Scott Gross, 8 Whitematta Road. No issues.
So we're just hearing objectors if that was it.
Well, that would, the objectors have a standing relative to the issue of the continuation. You both gentlemen will both be here on the 8th of December. That's the rationale, Mr. Chairman.
Make a motion to, yeah, make a motion. Grant the continuance to November 8th, December 8th, I'm sorry. Without notice.
And with the extension of time of decision. All right, until the end of the year, we said?
Yes.
I'll second that.
More pointed discussion, when we do get the re-survey from Mr. Ford, I'd appreciate if he could highlight the changes from the previous one, so we're not, we don't have to do it ourselves.
Okay, so we have a motion. I guess we need a roll call, then?
Yep.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Peasen?
Yes.
Mr. Senator Armita?
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Yes.
Committeeman Delcor?
Yes.
Herr Leponti?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julien?
Yes.
For purposes of the record and for those who watch online, there will be no further notice, i.e., this matter will be heard on December the 8th. You will not get another notice in the mail, et cetera, telling you it's been moved. So, counsel, thank you.
Nothing further.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Cass.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking a hit from Mr. O'Grady. Come on.
Okay, at this time, what we're going to do is we're going to cover planning board business, and we're going to have an update from Mr. Coys, the Deputy Zoning Officer, on some of the code violations on 203 Homestead. Mr. Coys?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and rest of the board members. On August 17th, 2022, I conducted a site investigation on the property 203 Homestead Road in response to complaints that there was some disturbance in terms of tree clearing. I went to the site, and I did witness some trees that were removed. Also, I had witnessed disturbance of some of the wetlands on the property, and also disturbance of the stream corridor area. On August 22nd, I then issued the stop work order, ordering the farmer, the property owner, to stop all activity in regards to any of the critical areas on the property. On September 15th, I then did a site, a site visit with the actual farmer on the property and walked the site in more detail. And as I was walking on the site, I became more aware of the solid waste issues on the On September 23rd, I then issued another clarification to the stop worker, basically saying that the stop work order was still in effect. At that time, it was basically a response to the property owner that had made some statements about the property. I felt it was important to, to remind them that the stop work order was still in effect. And at this time, there's currently a NJDEP case number. Originally, the complaint was put in for the wetlands and stream corridor disturbances, and since then, the solid waste complaint has been added to the same case number. On September 28th, there was a site visit conducted again by myself, including with the NJDEP, specifically the department that looks into wetlands and stream corridor disturbances. And up to this point, it is still an active investigation, and we do not have any findings from NJDEP. I did put my correspondence to the property owner that the town reserves its full rights to anything in the ordinance regards to tree mitigation or to anything related to the wetlands and the stream corridor. And we're basically waiting for NJDEP and any other authority that is going to go to the property and make sure that everything's being done correctly, including soils of conservation district. And at this time, that is my report to the board.
Did, did they discuss any timeframes or with any of the issues?
They, NJDEP indicated that the solid waste team was going to be responding to it separately, and we do not have any date on when the solid waste team is going to be conducting their investigation on the property. We currently don't have a timeline.
Thank you. Anybody on the board have comments or questions?
Eric is curious if, I mean, is that any other, similar to any other contingency? Or does that need to be, would essentially DEP need to have a resolution prior? I believe, based on the issues that are before, no, excuse me for a moment, I may have a sneeze. The issues before the board, as well as the topography issue and related, I think it's more than the standard condition upon. There are two claims, as David indicated. One is wetlands, the other is solid waste, and the impact of either or both on, by DEP's investigation may impact the plans before the board now, and even the plans that may be submitted before, for the board review prior to the December 8th meeting. So I don't believe it is in and of itself a conditional issue that can be addressed. Now, we'll see when, when and if DEP comes back, we'll see where we are.
Mr. Maskey, you have anything, or?
Nothing.
Anybody else there?
Okay, well, thank you for that report. So at this time, what we're going to do is we will open for business from, from the floor, so can I have a motion to open for matter, for business from the floor for matters that are not on the agenda? We don't have a applicant tonight, so therefore, there's nothing specific that you can ask the applicant, but you're welcome to come to the, to the mic and talk about matters that are not on the agenda tonight.
So can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are open to the public. If anybody would like to come up to the microphone, please state your name, address.
Just to be clear, we're not, we can't talk about this application. It is on the agenda.
Did everybody hear that? Okay.
Mia T. Shaw, 3 D A Run, Hillsboro. I have a question for Mr. Coys. Is that allowed?
Don't know.
Or Mr. Bernstein, is that allowed, based on what you guys just discussed?
If it involves the application, no.
Okay. Can't, I can't make a comment either, right?
You can make, this is really not comment time. I mean, I'll leave that to the chair as to how he wants to handle that one.
I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to stick to the rules. I don't want to talk about the application. I don't know what comments you're going to make, so I can't say, "Don't make a comment." So obviously, you know, you kind of caught me.
Essentially, what David's report was, the facts of what's going on, and the fact that we are now in a waiting, a whole period till the DEP comes back, and the application is coming back in front of us in December 8th, hopefully we'll have answers for that at that point, so.
Yeah. What if my comment is about just general efficiency of time and how best to use it for the township and the board?
It's not applicant specific. You can make suggestions.
So just in general, I'd like to say that, you know, it sounds like when the state has to get involved and it's going to have a huge impact on where things could go, perhaps, you know, in the interest of everyone's time, we wait for the state to rule before we move further on any application, whatever application isn't part of the board.
May I? The answer is, as to this application that we're not talking about?
Exactly. Not talking about this one.
As to the application we're not talking about, the answer is yes. The board is going to minimally wait to see whether or not we get a response from DEP prior to the 8th of December. Since there is nothing else pending before DEP that I'm aware of relative to any other application, there is nothing to stop, there is nothing there to have the board wait as to any of the other applications at this time. But I just want to be clear, if your question is, should we not move forward with any application until we have DEP or other agency approvals, with that, we can't do, okay?
No, no, no. I'm just saying, if there's an application that is under review by the DEP hypothetically, perhaps we should...
Pretty much every application is under review at the time.
Maybe we should wait, you know?
Well, that's my point, we can't do that. That, therein lies the difference. The difference is, there is a, there are two pending violations as to the property on the non-existent application that we're not discussing. If we're talking about standard state review of applications, it's no different than any other application that would be potentially conditioned, depending upon what else is at issue.
Okay.
This one is different because they are directly involved in complaints that have been brought, one by the township and one actually by the farmer.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Almost like a lawyer, hypothetical.
Good evening. I have a comment to make.
Please state your name, please.
About the application.
Name and address.
Brian Tarantino, 235 Fairfield Lane. Good evening. I don't know if you've noticed, but there are quite a lot of warehouses suddenly being proposed in Hillsboro. And not just Hillsboro in general, but they're all concentrated here in the eastern part of our town. This has amplified a problem that exists in Hillsboro, as it does in dozens of towns across New Jersey. In these circumstances, the local population has an extreme disadvantage to developers. Today, we are asking that you appoint a public advocate to represent the interests of our local community in order to correct the grave imbalance of power that exists regarding the proposed warehouses. When our community group gets together, we encourage everyone to read the reports and plans that are posted for each of the proposals. Highly technical stormwater reports, traffic reports that are detailed and technical, environmental remediation reports that are hundreds of pages long, extraordinarily detailed plot plans, legal documents. We are at an extreme disadvantage because these materials are not written for the layperson. Are they correct? Are there mistakes? Are they objective or skewed towards the developer who paid for it? How would a local citizen know without spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on attorneys, traffic experts, stormwater experts, sewer remediation experts, structural engineers, planners, and architects? And that's for each application. Multiply that by six. And by the way, I'm not an attorney. If you look around the room, when, and today's light because of the change in the agenda, there is a high level of concern and fear over these developments. People are taking their scant spare time to be here, week after week. And I'll tell you, for every person that you see here, there are 10, 20, or 50 others who care just as much but can't attend because they're driving their kids to soccer, or have work, or something else. This process is skewed against local citizens because of the extraordinary amount of time required to mount an opposition to the proposals. As Mr. O'Grady rudely asked me at the July 7th Planning Board meeting, "Are you an expert in variances?" No, I am not. And his blustery challenge puts a finger on the exact problem. We are not experts in developing warehouses. I know that some individuals have spoken up out of turn, yelled out answers to questions, and otherwise have had emotional outbursts. I'm not condoning such behavior, but you, as the planning board, should take notice, not just to put your foot down on out-of-order outbursts, but what's behind it? An extreme level of frustration. We are not equipped to stand up against these developers. We feel helpless. The balance of power in these proceedings is utterly against the local citizen. There is precious little that we are able to do, and the consequences of these ungodly buildings are entirely borne by us. Extreme flooding events that destroy our homes, trucks blocking our roads, spewing harmful pollutants that our children breathe, tearing up the roads where we drive, turning our neighborhoods into bleak industrial wasteland. What should be done to correct this harmful imbalance? We, as local citizens, are calling upon you to appoint a public advocate to represent our interests in these matters. This advocate will have access to legal and technical help so we can properly stand up for our communities and neighborhoods. Some towns in New Jersey have appointed such advocates as full-time township employees, acknowledging the David versus Goliath reality. These include Paramus, Oradel, Fair Lawn, and West Orange, and citizens are asking for such an advocate in Edison. A public advocate would help to right this imbalance and work to give local citizens a fighting chance to represent their interests. It is the right thing to do. To Mr. Grief and all the other developers looking to erect these outrageous buildings on rural roads, verdant lands, and in flood-prone areas, we say to you, we will continue to fight with whatever we have. We will endure rude comments from your attorneys, unfair challenges of being political from the planning board, reading hundreds and hundreds of pages of complex technical documents, attending hour after hour of hearings. We will fight because you are threatening our homes and families. You would do the same if someone wanted to build a giant warehouse next to your mansion in Boca Raton. The deck is stacked against us. It is not a level playing field. We, the public, are at an extreme disadvantage. But we are confident that we will win despite your investment of millions of dollars in these developments. We are confident because it is clear, the buildings don't belong here. You know it, and I know it. We will persist with a public advocate or without, and we will win, and then maybe you will look to a more suitable location, like up north on 206, near the other warehouses. It is, in the interest of the public and our fragile lands, we ask you to withdraw your proposals. They don't belong here.
Anybody else have anything to say about, not to say about this application?
I just, just so I can make a comment, I just like, while I appreciate your passion, Mr. Tarantino, I don't think you recognize that the people that are on the board also live here. Our professionals are paid by the township to, to ensure that they're doing right by the, by the township and by the residents, and to ensure that the application process is a fair one. And you make it sound as though somehow this group, not the developers, this group is somehow slanted against the residents, and frankly, I find that insulting. And if you can believe that all you want, I've been up on this board for 15 years, and it's infuriating.
You'll take stuff behind those talks on Willow Road that when you try to make your...
You're right, because I don't live here either.
I didn't say anything about slanted against us. I mean, I could make, I could make comments about that.
Would you, would you?
But even if it was even, even if there was no additional consideration given to the public, the process is slanted against us because we are not, we are not, don't have high-paid experts, and we're just working, we're just defending our property. We're not running a business. We're not, we don't have millions of dollars to, to throw at it, and, you know, let's have two traffic experts. No, let's have three. I mean, how many weeks did we have three traffic experts here just waiting, paid for by Mr. Grief? Because they can afford it. But we, as citizens, we cannot. And that's what I'm saying. I'm not, I wasn't impugning you guys. Fine, be impartial, but that's, impartial is not enough. That's what I'm saying.
I think his point was, we have professionals that are paid and trained to question those professionals.
On your behalf.
On your behalf, right.
Indeed, but, I mean, Mr. Maskey's evaluation of the, of the, of the ordinance, of compliance with the ordinance that he did, that you did some months ago on the application we're not talking about, didn't include many of the items in the T E C D that I pointed out at the July 7th meeting. So perhaps there are, we have, we have experts who are doing these things, but our, our interests are really not being represented, honestly. Sorry to take more time.
I'm Craig Berlin, 1 Alls House Street, and I was wondering on if any progress has been made or what the status is on the site visit for 303 Amwell?
Not sure.
Just to refresh your memory, there were items that were not accounted for on the inspection, such as concrete blocks, and we produced photos of 55-gallon containers and storage, corroded storage vessels, and at the meeting, it was said that it was requested there would be a walkthrough again to look for those items after the applicant told us, "Well, I guess we'll have to look again."
Was that 203 or 303?
I'm sorry if I got it wrong.
303. 303.
Yeah, 303. I believe that site walk hasn't taken place yet. I know, I know what you're talking about, but I don't believe it's been set up yet.
Am I correct in believing that if it doesn't take place before the next meeting, the next meeting will be canceled as this one was because they're just not ready for it?
Well, the next meeting is January.
January, yeah.
Because you're on vacation.
In December. I'm going to show you guys the best of luck, and I thank you for what you've done up to this stage.
You know, the board, it would be up to the board if they feel they have adequate information at that time or not. If it was a promise made by the applicant to conduct a site walk, then that's what they should be doing, and they should get that information to us, obviously, well, in advance of January 20, of January 12.
Is there anything that we can put in writing directing them to do such? It was mentioned, it was, I'm not going to say directive was issued, but it was requested. I think in my own personal case with 303 Amwell, things we ask for, there's no movement, we get to the next meeting, and it's like, well, you still haven't, you know, done this or whatever from the requirements and the requests from the environmental meeting, and they gloss over... and they gloss over it, and it just seems like everything just keeps moving forward. And, and again, I, I appreciate your perspective on this also, I really do. This is not easy for any of us, and I know it's not easy for you guys. And for the fellows leaving, you guys are in battle there. You guys deserve some time off. But it's tough because we, we don't see this progressing. What we see is that we are out, we're having meetings, we're, we're looking at the documents, but we don't see anything else happening at that time. So we need a little bit of help and a little bit of coaching. If I, if I may for just one moment, also, the department, the NJDEP was interesting with this gentleman here filing a complaint for the town, as well as, there's another complaint, I believe, against the, that particular site on the one that is not on the, on the meeting tonight. Should I be taking steps to, to go to the NJDEP, or as you say, if you people are, the people questioning the sites also, will you be taking and filing a complaint if, in fact, these items are found on the, on site? We have, we provided pictures, so it's not speculation, it's.
I would leave the last question to Mr. Maskey and Mr. Coys to make the determination whether or not they should, one or both should be going out there on their own.
Looking for direction.
Yeah. Yeah. The other day, tomorrow we'll check on the status of the, the site visit.
Was that with the environmental commission?
We'll have to check. With, with the environmental commission, with even people from the neighborhood, we will check on the status, make sure it's set up properly.
Counsel, you might want to ask your partners what the status is.
Yeah. Because I do remember that, and then last environmental commission meeting, I remember I, I asked Chairman Foley that I wanted to be there myself as well with that sidewalk. So it is tough to keep track of all of these.
Yeah. Feel free to give us a call. We're closed Monday, give us a call Tuesday, see, see where we're at, ask for myself or Dave Coys and.
Thank you. And, and in general, Mr. Berlin, the reason why things aren't happening is because exactly the things you're raising and others are raising as to why they're not happening. We come to meetings and the board is just as frustrated as everybody else is because we don't have answers to the questions. So the reason why these are going on is exactly those reasons. Tonight didn't go on for a reason, and if they don't do what they're supposed to do, whether it's any applicant, by the way, not just the ones in question, do not have what the board needs, they may continue, they may not. But the board isn't going to go forward with an application because the applicant happens to be here and it's their night to go if they're not ready to produce or present everything the board wants to hear, or the objectors, or the public.
Great. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Motion.
On a follow-up on that, something came up this week I didn't know. If you have a, an applicant making multiple requests for adjournments, "I'm not ready," et cetera, is there any action at some point that a township can take, or do they just keep saying, "Okay, see you again"?
The applicant has the right to ask for an extension of the hearing. It's ultimately the objective of the board to hear an application and decide whether to approve it or reject it, rather than going through a technical issue which may simply end up being, going up to Somerville, and what I mean by going up to Somerville focuses Superior Court, only to come back here. Because the court says they haven't been given sufficient time, they haven't been given sufficient opportunity, and we have the hearings anyway. There's not a lot of value in what, what one might refer to in my words, is gotcha. So the applicant has the right, the board can reject, but the board has to have a reason to reject an extinction for a time of decision in an application.
We can't be capricious in our, in our judgments. We have to, we have to allow certain reasonable timeframes. Or, as Eric said, it's going to get kicked right back to us, we're going to end up paying legal fees, and we're going to end up right back here anyway.
Which is nothing wrong with that. But the, the other pieces, in many cases, the extensions are being asked because the township, for example, not discussing tonight, the reason why the extension was granted was based on requests, based on comments by me and by Mr. Coys relative to issues that are out there, and in many cases, that's the same issue, whether it's stormwater, whether it's engineering, whether it's plans, whether it's like, DEP happens to be somewhat of a, a change of pace, but it's usually board-generated because the board professionals or the board have not been provided what they believe they need and they want to make a decision.
So it would have to be something really bad before, let's say, Somerville would finally say, "You're right, these people are messing around with you."
Well, theoretically, we could just take a vote to deny the application in general if they really felt it was that.
We're going to have to have good reason.
We would have to have a good reason, but.
Actually, somebody did ask me, what if tonight you said, "No, we're not going to give you an adjournment, go ahead and proceed."
For the reason that the counselor just said. Because they haven't had the opportunity to really present the.
Because the applicant is attempting to address an issue raised by the board and its professionals, therefore, there's a rationale for granting the extension.
In this theoretical case.
Non-theoretical theoretical case. In any, in any cases, as you know, Susan, having been before, been here, nights when you were the only one here, the board tries to, to deal with applicants the same irrespective of whether it's a warehouse application, an affordable housing application, or a tool, or a two-lot minor subdivision. It's the same general rules.
Okay. On another subject, which I, if a property came up with other ordinances like abandon inoperable vehicles and other problems came up, would Mr. Coys then would be coming in to make other reports to the board?
If there is a reason to advise the board of situations that he has found relative to pending applications before the board, I would suspect the answer is yes. But in the absence of a pending application, I mean, Mr. Coys is on the agenda tonight because there was a pending application of which he was here to discuss. I don't think it's the plan of the planning department nor my office to have Mr. Coys, who's going to be here anyway, have Mr. Coys come and give reports on applications that are not currently before the board or are not before the board on the night in question.
Okay, thank you.
But the material will be on civic clerk in the prior.
Okay, thanks. Hi again, should I restate my name?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Nia T. Shaw, 3D Iran. So, you know, I think everybody feels so much uncertainty about all of the proposals that are being considered, right? And there's just a general feeling of fear, trepidation, and a little bit of despair, right? But I want to offer an alternative view. We don't know how these applications will net out, we don't know what the decisions will be, but if there is an opportunity to do something different with these properties, I would want to take it, and I would hope that we would take it from the perspective of a weekend in Hillsborough. What does that look like, right? All of these properties are near some beautiful farms. Why not use the space we have to build an outdoor theater, or a wood-fired pizza place like Amay Pizza? Maybe they can open a second location, right? Or an ice cream shop, or a bakery, or an outdoor music venue, right? Where you can come, get your veggies from the farmer's market, go over, get pizza, watch a movie, maybe we could have a winery, get a, you know, a glass of wine. You could spend an entire day just traversing three streets. Wouldn't you want to bring your kids there? The homes that are being built here, the homes that will be built here in the next few years, these are million-dollar homes. That's what these families want. They don't want to drive, you know, an hour away to experience this. You could experience it right here, right here, and people would come from all over for this. Montgomery is building something, I think at that airport site or somewhere on 206, where they're going to bring Turning Point, the brunch place, they're going to bring a lot of other eateries that are going to be integrated with homes. That sounds exciting. I don't have to go to Princeton for brunch, I could go to Montgomery. Well, if I don't have to go someplace else for a winery, I could go to Hillsborough, I could go to outdoor movie theater, why not? Why would I go anywhere else?
Just, I appreciate your sentiment, I really do, but, but I just want to be clear, those are not municipal projects, those are development projects, just like the ones we're, we're talking about here. So if the developer that owns the property decided that they wanted to do something like that, would we encourage it? Sure. Would there still be people that would, would come out and say, "I don't want that in my, my neighborhood," probably? But recognize that we don't control ultimately what the developer does with that property. We only can judge based upon what the application is that's being put forth ahead of us.
And I can appreciate that, but what I'm wondering is, with regards to the zoning, can it not be further specified what kinds of commercial uses would be allowed, instead of just, you know, a wide latitude of commercial uses, right?
Board should not answer that, but more importantly, the zoning in place at the time the application was deemed complete, any application, courtesy, by the way, of the legislature, and I know some of you are tired of hearing members up here talking about the legislature, but it's the legislature who decided at the behest of the development community to change the rule from time of decision to time of application. Therefore, the zoning in place is the zoning in place unless the applicant withdraws the application. Therefore, we have what we have. It will be up to the board to decide on each and every one of these applications based on what's before them, whether or not to accept or reject. But possibilities depend in large measure on what the applicant wants to do with the property.
Yeah, no, and I get that. I absolutely get that.
And the zoning, which is in place.
So hypothetically, let's say one or more of these applications don't go through, do we not have an opportunity to change or further specify the zoning at that point?
I, I don't wish to, I'll try not to do too much speculation because the speculation benefits me, but chances are, if by some measure, if the board takes, makes a decision that is quote adverse, close quote, to the application, I somehow doubt, at least at the moment, that the applicant is simply going to say, "I'm done, I've had enough, let's talk about rezoning the property." I would suspect the more likely opportunity is going to be a visit to Superior Court. So we'll deal with it accordingly, when and if the board ever makes decisions on these applications.
Just some thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, if I see no others, who make a motion to close the public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we are closed to the public. So I do not see any other business or consideration of ordinances, correct?
That's correct, that's it. The next meeting is October 13th.
Okay.
Next week, yes.
So with that being said, who make a, make a motion for an adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.